Good evening again, everyone, and welcome now to the regular Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, February 9, 2015. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Lennon?
Present.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Here.
Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter?
Here, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda, what is council's pleasure on the agenda?
I'd like to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
We'll give that one to Martin, so moved by Lennon and supported by Martin. Any discussion on the agenda this evening? Any changes? If not, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on to presentations this evening, we have two presentations. The first one is the introduction, this is exciting, of our newly appointed police lieutenant and sergeant. And I think Jenny is going to introduce this item, and then the chief is going to come up as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are very excited tonight to introduce to three of our newest promoted police department employees. As you remember, back in May, June-ish of last year, we started some conversations surrounding the potential for council to approve buyouts. We had a lot of conversations about that, inevitably that was approved. In our police department, we had five individuals who accepted buyouts, which has afforded us the opportunity to conduct promotional processes in the police department and establish eligibility lists for the positions of lieutenant and sergeant. So with that, I will turn it over to the chief, who will introduce our newest promoted officer.
And Chief, Chief, you want to use the...
No, I can talk while I'm here.
But they can't hear you at home if you do, I'm sorry. The whole community wants to hear you.
We are also very excited, as Jenny said, we have, there's been a long time since we've had any promotions, 2012, and in an agency of our size, it is also very difficult, very timely, to get sergeants and lieutenants on board. It's for an agency our size, these positions don't open up, and when they do open up, we want to get the best of the best for these positions. This evening, one of our, now was our longest-serving sergeant, Shane Peetak, he was here, by word, with his mother, Chris Peetak, and his wife Teresa, and his daughter Madison, and his son Connor, they're all here in the audience. Shane was hired at the Ferndale Police Department in October of 1994. He was promoted to sergeant in 2002. Shane is an accident reconstructionist, reconstructionist, which is quite a feat, and a lot of schooling that goes into that. He's a former member of the Ferndale Police Honor Guard, and he's a former field training officer. Sergeant Peetak was promoted to the rank of lieutenant on January 8, 2015. I'd like to present him to you, Council.
Yeah. Oh.
Congratulations.
I don't know, congratulations, man, good luck.
Lieutenant Peetak also said that I can't tell any stupid jokes while I was here. I won't.
Ah.
Also this evening, one of the biggest steps in law enforcement is going from that step of patrol officer to sergeant. One of the most important jobs on the force is, these are the individuals that are responsible on the line for making sure that our officers are doing the right thing, and then following up with training and all the other things to keep all that machinery working properly. So these are one of the, these next two are the first big step in their career, and we're very proud. First, we have David Spelman. He was, Dave was hired as a service aide in Ferndale in 1996. He was promoted to the rank of police officer on August 25, 1997, went to the police academy. Dave Spelman was assigned to the Oakland County Narcotics Enforcement Team as undercover narcotics investigator for three years. He is also a former member of the Ferndale Police Honor Guard, he is also a field training officer. Sergeant Spelman is an evidence technician and now in charge of that unit. Dave was promoted to the rank of sergeant on January 8, 2015. I'd like to present to you Sergeant David Spelman.
Congratulations.
Sergeant? You got the rose.
Good job, man. Second hand spell dog. Congratulations.
And again, another one of our new sergeants, Tim DeAndre. Tim was hired in 1996. He is, he was assigned for four years to the Drug Enforcement Administration as a representative at that unit. He did an outstanding job there for the period of time that he was there. Sergeant Andre was one of the several officers that went to New Orleans during the Katrina disaster and helped out in that community for quite some time. Sergeant Andre is also an evidence technician and a field training officer. He was promoted to the rank of sergeant on January 12, 2015. I'd like to congratulate him.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good job, man. Congratulations.
Okay, can't help myself, Tim rode the bus with Melanie Piana.
That was a lot of fun. Had nothing to do with his promotion, however.
We all want to thank you, everybody. One thing I would note is that all three of these gentlemen were field training officers, and they have been responsible for quite some time for the, for the officers' training as they come in as brand-new individuals to our organization, and I think that speaks well of not only that operation, but also it is a, one of those stepping stones for promotion, and they've followed that, and we're very proud of all three of them, and expect great things. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. And as, as the chief said, we don't get a chance to do that very often, or I guess as Jenny said, there's, we don't get a chance to do that very often. Promotions in our police department are relatively rare, and so, congratulations, gentlemen, we know you'll do a great job for the citizens of Ferndale. Thank you. Our next presentation is, is also related to the police department, but it's, on a sadder note, we lost one of our former police officers, and I would like to acknowledge that and read a resolution at this time, if I may. City of Ferndale Resolution of Condolence honoring William A. Dunn. At the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Ferndale held in these chambers on March, on February the 9th, Mayor David Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extends the city's condolences to the family of William A. Dunn. William, following his father and brother, served this community with honor and dedication as a police officer from 1966 until 1982. William will be missed by many, but especially by his wife, Deanie, stepchildren Donald and Sandra, grandsons Matthew and James, siblings Elizabeth and David, and many nieces and nephews. William Dunn was a credit to his family and to this community, and it is with deep sorrow that we mourn his loss today. We'll make sure that his family gets this. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our presentations for this evening. Next item of business would be call to audience. Call to audience is, anyone, is your opportunity, if you're here in the audience, to address council on any issue that's not on the agenda, because you can speak to that when we get to there. Come on up, give us your name, your address, and three minutes is yours. Former Councilwoman Baker?
Hi, Mayor, hi, Council, hi, Joe, it's nice to see you sitting over there. I'm just following up on the meeting that we had previously, and one of the comments that I heard over and over was about communication. And I knew about the meeting as the vice chair of the Planning Commission. As soon as we found out the presentation was coming up, I put it on my calendar right away. I wanted to make sure that I heard residents' concerns, business owners' concerns, because this is potentially a planned unit development. If and when it comes to the Planning Commission, the city's going to have a lot of say in how this looks and feels, and particularly the parking aspect of it. So I knew about it, I guess because I'm a little bit on the inside, still. But as my friend and I were sitting scrolling through the City of Ferndale Facebook page and other things, we didn't see any obvious announcements about it. So I know that, that we've been working very hard to improve communication, I know it's one of the things that, that Joe's been working on and doing a great job, and we have these new communication vehicles now. And I'm, I'm also just sort of wondering what role maybe the DDA could have in getting the word out a little bit more to business owners, people that seemed to feel like they were out of the loop, and perhaps that's something that the DDA could help us with as well. So that's it.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hey, I'm the first time here.
Excellent, welcome.
Hi, my name is John Simble, I own Driven on 320 West Nine Mile, Suite B, as in Boy, next to Asagi. Two things to address, first one, love to have a surveillance cam on that west end down where Plantavon is. Been broken into four times, everything ripped out of the front dash of the vehicle. I have a list here, I don't need to go onto that, but love to have that, because we have stuff stolen all the time, and we work late, and it's, it's really tough down there. Centers on the hubs stolen all the time, so personally, I believe I've filed 11 reports since moving here, happily moving here, four years ago, so it's tough. Next item, parking permits. I spend about, well, in the past four years, $21,800 for parking permits for my employees and myself, and we get tickets all the time. From Plantavon to Inyo, where the long-term parking spot is, that's full quite often, and so when we have to park in the middle of the lot, we still get tickets, it's a pain in the butt, we got to come in all the time, so I've paid over $360 in the past two years in tickets, just because I'd rather pay it to make it go away, it's, it's tough. So I wish there was a little bit more leniency on the monthly parkers. I have some suggestions here that you can read at your own leisure.
Could you submit them to us, though, and, and we'll make sure we take a look at those, eh? And Joe, did you want to...
May I ask a question through the...
Well, hang on a second, guys, I think Joe had a comment first, or...
Oh, I was just going to say, I'd be happy to follow up with you.
Oh, okay, yeah, Councilman.
We'll work with the public parking to follow up with you. I, I was wondering if you found problems with parking during the peak times, so between like 5:00 and 9:00 on Fridays and Saturdays, was that, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday, was that generally the time that you would be forced to park in the non-long-term parking?
It's a piece of cake. 9:30, 9:45 on the weekdays, we're sometimes at the park, I mean, we have, I have plenty of employees, so they all, that fills up almost more than halfway to Inyo, so that stuff. Did you go in and tell them, or you had any work in the meeting, and you come back, you're trying, I mean, people come and go, but now that there's locals on the corner...
Oh. Folks at home can't hear you unless you actually add a microphone, I know. You're doing great, it's my first time, and we appreciate you being here.
I have a question, too, just real quick for you.
Sure.
Let me, so I'm just clarifying on this, you buy a long-term permit.
Yep.
You can't use it because those spots are full, so you take an alternative spot, and you're still getting a ticket.
Yes, sir.
And that permit's still displayed?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Well, Chief, we need to...
Let me correct, Councilman, the, the city has long-term parking spots that are designated in each parking lot of the municipal system. Just to clarify, in each municipal...
They are not clearly...
In that lot?
Right, they're not clearly labeled, they used to be, there used to be a sign, so we need new signs, right, and, and if I were to go anywhere else, I don't know where the long-term is, I probably have a ticket right now, because I didn't know where to go here.
So we'll be, we'll be happy to follow up with you this week.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you, and thanks for coming.
I also have one more question, for clarity.
Oh, sure.
Were all these incidences of, of crime in the last six months, any of them?
No, it's, it's, the centers of the hubs, yes, and the other vehicle, the Tahoe, that's my business partner, Brian, so we can sit down and talk all day about it, but in the past six months, the rim centers of our hubs, it's only $300, can't get it at the duct of the line, so we just pay it. But our insurance rates have gone up, it's a bummer.
Right, well, my question is, has the Republic Parking, Parking Ambassadors been helping reduce the frequency of these incidences? So that's something I would like the, the, since there are eyes and ears in the parking lots?
Sure, I'll make sure if, if they do hear of any of these events, that they would communicate those to the police department, they're pretty good about communicating any observations that they have.
Right on. Thank you very much, I look for...
We'll speak with you this week.
Thanks, John, appreciate it. Katie, good evening.
Good evening, Council. Katie Hirschberger, 750 West Maplehurst, I've now got 38 and a half years in here in Ferndale.
All right.
Some of you know that initially I was not a proponent of apartment structure. I'm coming around a little bit more, especially since the fact that I see that, if I understand it correctly, there's only going to be apartments in the Withington structure and none in the Troy lot. I have empathy for the small business owners who feel that they will be very adversely affected by the construction. I personally do not go to any store that I cannot park close to, and I do not park in structures anymore, unless I can park on the ground level, close to where I want to go. So it probably isn't going to change my pattern of not shopping in downtown Ferndale or eating in our restaurants very often. I realize that we have a parking problem, and that we have to find some viable solution. And I don't have any brilliant ideas about it, but I think that the council and the business community needs to work together to find something to help those small business owners. I don't know whether you give them some sort of parking area and provide them with free transportation back and forth, but that doesn't solve the problem for their customers. I just don't know, I hope you can come up with something that will meet the needs of both the business owners and the customers.
Thanks. Thank you. Thanks, Katie. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right, seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that we consider routine, and we enact in one motion unless council pulls something from the consent agenda. Let me read that for you now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held January 26, 2015. Item B is the approval of the creation and filling of the building official position, with position to include Mark Howell becoming the building official, as submitted by our Director of Human Resources. Item C is the approval of the observance of Memorial Day on Monday, May 25, 2015, with the 97th Annual Memorial Day Parade as organized by the Ferndale Memorial Association, and authorization for the mayor to sign the agreement for the Ferndale Memorial Association to organize the parade. And finally, item D is the approval of the bills and payroll, as submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to review by the Council Finance Committee.
I would move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Any discussion on the consent agenda? If not, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, the consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda, regular agenda, item A is the consideration to appoint Mark Loeb to the Arts and Cultural Commission for a term ending December 31, 2017. Not sure who's introducing that.
I'll introduce it, if you'd like. Mark is a candidate that, for the Arts and Cultural Commission, that has a strong background in presenting art fairs, as it were, and his ongoing work in that, in that regard, and he, I think, will make a strong component to the continuation of the good work of the Arts and Culture Commission, has, has been on for the last 14 months or so.
Excellent. Is Mark here? I don't, pardon me, I don't, I'm not sure.
I don't believe he's here, no.
Nope, all right. Any, any questions on this item?
I move to confirm the appointment of Mark Loeb to the Arts and Culture Commission for a term ending December 31, 2017.
Support.
Supported, was I, moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Any discussions, questions, comments about this?
I think he's a great addition.
Yeah.
I do as well.
Agree.
Thank, thank you for serving, Mark. All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that appointment is adopted. Moving on to regular agenda, item B is a consideration of approval of ballot language and resolution for a street and park improvement bond proposal. And our city manager, acting city manager, Joe, is going to introduce this item for us, correct?
Yes, Your Honor, I will be introducing this item and the next item.
Indeed.
Okay, before I introduce this item, I want to point out that if there are any questions during the presentation, I would encourage you to speak up, we will pause. We do have the city engineer, the DPW director, and other active participants in this project that will have good insights to offer, should you have any questions.
Okay.
So this item is coming at us at this date, because the funding for our local road improvements are set to expire. Just to provide some background, in 1994, voters did approve approximately $45 million in infrastructure improvements. The debt service for those improvements should be retired within, by 2016. The tax rate for paying on that debt service currently is 6.5285. That's the tax rate that is being charged residents for the 2015, 2016 year. These local streets have been improved between five and 20 years. They are beginning to show signs of wear and tear, so, whoops, sorry, I jumped ahead of myself. Backing that up, I will, I'll reposition myself in a minute. We're actually in a backup here, just explaining why the city did go after bonds in 1994, and this slide is to illustrate that the State of Michigan's Act 51 is the guiding transportation policy, which defines that cities are responsible for maintaining their own major roads and Ways that those roads are funded are through a combination of a percentage of fuel tax dollars, which are Act 51 dollars, those are used for major roads. Cities typically bond for the repair and rehabilitation of their local roads, and of course, we always do aggressively pursue federal and state match grants to try to offset any spending from the city side. I would like to clarify and point out that the, the topic of, of this slide is intended to clarify that the state tax increases that will be proposed for the May election will not fund local road repairs. Those, the state tax increment that they're bringing to voters in May will be strictly for funding state roads, not city and local roads. I wanted to build on the federal funds that the city has pursued and can expect to initiate and progress through 2015 and 16, and then again in 2017. In 2015 and 16, we can expect the East Nine Mile Reconstruction to continue and rehabilitation, and you will also see Hilton Road between Eight Mile and Nine Mile, and Woodward Heights on Hilton Road between Woodward Heights and Ten Mile. The city's share is approximately 1.475 million, and the federal share is about 2.5 million. So because the local roads are about to retire, the city did request the city's engineering firm, Givens Webster, to conduct a capital improvement report, and they evaluated the city's road system. As you can see here, to illustrate in this slide, you look at 2006, which would have been about nine to 10 years ago, and you had more of your road conditions in line with good and excellent, so, again, 10 years later, you see you're going just the opposite way, you have an inverse relationship, where your roads are declining right now. That insight is an important factor in choosing why we would want to present to reinvest in the road systems.
It is, and so, a, a couple of things. First of all, so we did talk a little bit about the survey that was done to determine the condition of the roads, when was that done, just recently?
Sure, that has been done recently, and that's actually, the next slide, I was going to actually invite Scott Ringler up here to kind of walk us through this slide, and walk the public through how the city streets are evaluated and how costs are estimated.
And, and just, okay, so, but before you do that, because I know we did that survey recently, but just so I'm clear about what this is saying, so green 2014 is, is now, and so what you're saying is that 18.7% of our, of our roads are in poor condition, 44.34% are in fair condition, which means over half of our roads are in fair or poor condition?
That is an accurate statement, turning downward.
Currently, today, yeah.
Yeah.
None of them are in excellent condition, apparently, according to this.
Very marginally, yeah.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I'm, I'm reading that right.
Yeah, so that, that's a critical point to illustrate why we are here tonight.
Except that, now I have a question, I'm sorry, how, they, they don't, they don't equal 100%.
Buzz in here?
Yes, please, Scott.
That's actually road miles, not percentage.
Road miles, not percentage, thank you.
And just to clarify the excellent, the way the Pacer works, is when you resurface a street, that street's only considered in excellent condition for one year.
Wow, okay.
So after that first year, you got to knock it down to at least a nine, so...
Okay.
Rarely will you see a road in excellent unless it's been resurfaced in the past year.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay, just wanted to be clear about that.
Yeah, can you walk, can you walk the public and council through just generally Michigan's Pacer method?
All right. The Pacer method, it stands for Pavement Surface Evaluation Rating. It is a process that MDOT requires municipalities to use, the streets are supposed to be rated every two to three years, is what it is, it's a very cost-effective and efficient method to visually inspect the road surface. So is what we do, and I actually have to have somebody certified to do that, it's a training course through MDOT, we have to get certified to do it, but is what we do is we take a laptop, we download through the State of Michigan, the GIS system for Ferndale, and that's hooked up to a GIS thing that we put on the roof of our cars. So we drive down the street, we evaluate the street from a 1 to a 10, and we input that data into the computer.
Okay.
That's supposed to happen every two to three years. There's different criteria that's used, in fact, there's a big manual here that we use to rate the roads, so it's, you know, it kind of gives you a little more of a, a system to do it, so it's just not, you know, my opinion versus Joe's, it's, you take it out of the guide, so...
Thanks.
Can we fast forward real quick? So these are a couple of the roads that, that we, we pulled, these two examples are roads that are considered in poor condition, they're rated a number two. Little hard to see there, but you can see the amount of alligator cracking that's on these roads, excuse me, roads that have more than 25% alligator cracking are condition two roads, so, kind of comes out of the Pacer manual, so there's a little rhyme and reason on how we rate the roads. I believe these two roads, I think Oakridge was rated a four, which is fair condition, and La Prairie was rated a six, which was actually, the bottom line, a good condition. And you can kind of see the difference there, Oakridge has a lot more cracking, you can go back, yeah, Oakridge you can see has a lot more cracking, whereas La Prairie has a lot less cracking. So once again, you go through the manual, you look at the different cracks, how many cracks are in there, and you give it that rating. And I think we got one more slide. These are a little harder to tell, but Elbert and Rosewood were rated a condition three, and both of these roads have alligator cracking, it's just not 25%, it's less than 25%. So based on the manual, then would be given a condition rating of a three.
How long does it take a typical road to go from excellent to poor? I know there's no standard answer, but...
There's no great standard, usually we use about every three years it goes down one point, kind of a rule of thumb, but every road's a little different.
Thank you.
Good?
Yep.
Yeah, so the Pacer system serves as a good indicator that the city needs to begin to reconsider reinvesting in the infrastructure. So that moves us on to the financial portion of the report. The report does indicate that the local road repairs plus contingencies would equal about 38, 39-point million. The city does have a, a matched contribution towards the federal-branded roads that we had discussed earlier, and that's about just under 1.5, and then there are considerations of traffic signals and ADA ramps that the city would have to be responsible for as well to complete these projects. So the total sum would be 43.2 for the roads portion. So while the road evaluation was going on in 2014, the city also had a park system evaluation going on that was led by the city's Park and Recreation Commission, and supported by our Public Works and our recreation team. They were charged with the, the task, the fun task, of reviewing several different parks that would be consistent with the city's recreation and master plan, as well as the, the Blue Ribbon Panel findings that were discovered earlier in the year. And then they had to identify the potential for funding sources and whittle all these projects down and, and get some prioritized for investment. projects down and, and get some prioritized investment. I would like to clarify again that while we do have projects that have been identified, no locations have been determined for these potential projects, not at this point. This slide just gives kind of a breakdown of, of the 15 projects. There's been 15 projects, and we have a list of broken down between five projects. The sum of the project investment would be about 1.9 million dollars. So if we look at the parks at 2 million and then the roads at about 43 million, we're looking at about 45 million dollars in reinvestment in infrastructure and parks improvements. We do have Lloyd Kiraton, who is the Public Works Director, and I'm just going to ask him to come and provide an overview of just some of the highlight parks that the Park and Recreation Commission did finalize on.
Thank you, Joe. The, before I go into, further into the information that Joe has prepared, I'd like to say that, you know, this information that's being presented to council tonight really goes all the way back to prior to 2010 for, and is based on the current Park and Rec Master Plan, and also goes back to last year's Blue Ribbon, Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee, and then obviously our current Park and Rec Commission as well as the Park and Rec Director. The, the previous list, if you may, Joe, back me up one. You can see that these are, are broken down into three different segments. The first, but they're all rated based upon, there's a priority list. So the skate park, this, I'm sorry, the splash pad was the number one approved item, both by the committee as well as in the previous Park and Rec Plan, there were, there were water features and, and that was requested. So going from the first to the last, you can see that's the hierarchy. Doesn't necessarily mean that they'll be put in exactly that order. You know, there's some sense to doing things in construction where you may do play structures and paths at the same time so that people have access to the play structure to provide ADA accessibility. Go ahead, go on. One of the things that really scored high, as I said, was Splash Park. And although no, no, no area has been specifically identified for this as of yet, the, but it is a number one item that will be seriously considered. Go ahead. Skate Park, also, it's been requested by the community for a number of years, still a high item on the list. And next. Walking paths, these are one that is something that I've always found is very important, you know, to provide, you know, Ferndale's got a history of providing, you know, mobility and access to the community, be it bicycle or people with limited mobility. I think it's very important to improve our, our parks so that they connect with those pathways and provide access to everyone, you know, regardless of their physical ability. Go ahead, Joe. Play equipment, you can see the current play structure that's at Garbutt Park, which is, I'm, I'm happy to say before the summer's over, we will have quite nice things to present to council. We're, without letting the cat out of the bag too early, we have some very exciting things that have been, as part of the bid process, that's been presented to a current Park and Rec Commission. And over the next couple of meetings, we'll be evaluating that and bringing some sort of recommendation to council soon. And Joe, take it from here.
So it's really exciting. It's, they're all projects that were brought together as part of, of public documents and, and put together by a public commission, which is really exciting to see the results of that process and their work. So I had alluded to it earlier, but when you combine these two investment initiatives, you do get 45 million dollars, which is equal to the infrastructure bonds that are getting ready to be retired from 1994. So should these initiatives be approved by the voters, you would just have an extension of 45 million dollars, which has been the debt service that we've been paying on. But the tax rate would be actually about 1.1 less. So it's actually a tax cut of what residents have currently been paying for infrastructure We put this slide together just to give an example of what it might look like on a tax bill. So again, looking at the current tax rate with the current infrastructure bonds residents are paying at a rate of about 6.5285, and on a $75,000, a house with a taxable value of about $75,000, that would be about $489 a year. Moving forward next year for the park projects and the local infrastructure improvements, as I said, it'd be about a one mil tax cut. So residents would be looking at instead paying about 408, 407, which represents about $82 less on a house with a taxable value of $75,000. Just a sample of how this bond series could look at this point, because it's 45 million dollars, for simplicity reasons, we've broken that up into three issuance cycles. So bonds could be released at 15 million dollars in 2006. Right now, this model is based on 15-year terms. So any bonds released in 2016 would be, look to be paid up by 2030 and so on, as you can see, move your way through. So 2018 would be the next cycle, and then 2021 would be the third and final issuance. But again, this is a very liquid process. Nothing has been finalized yet as far as issuances. And this slide just kind of covers the importance of reinvestment. Walking through poor roads commonly are known to be aligned with communities in decline. They do offer obstructions for vehicle safety, and they are aligned with some public safety concerns. You have increased hazards for both motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists. And then you, good roads are a good sign of stabilization and, and community improvement. They are known to increase property values by increasing public safety and by increasing accessibility. The option of doing nothing would be to delay the inevitable. The road conditions will decline, and the longer you wait to reinvest in those roads and the more you let them decline, the more costly it becomes in the long term. And we do have members of our team here. If there are questions, I'd like to recognize Robert Watzinski and Stephen, I'm sorry, I don't have your last name, Stephen Frank. They are both our municipal finance and bond advisors, and they did a lot of work in, in putting together a bond modeling. Are there any questions from council?
Council, questions?
Not, yeah, no. I'm happy with it.
You're talking about the May, um, May...
Yes, I'm sorry, I actually didn't.
Yeah.
She didn't specify the dates that I've been referring to, but yes, it would be posed for the May 5th, 2015 election.
Right. I know, Joe, you put a lot into this, so it's good work.
It's a great presentation, Joe, thanks.
Thank you.
It is a great presentation. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about some of the sort of adjustments over the last couple of years that led to the stronger planning of coming up with the streets and bond plan, about like what, what some of the changes we've made internally so that we have a stronger assessment of what our needs are immediately for the next year, but also into the future? Because I think those are some of the internal continuous improvement that we have made so that we have a very accurate picture in going forward.
Sure, we'll break that into each component. So for parks, again, I'm excited about the organic energy that's been behind kind of assembling parks together at this moment and to this point. But our recreation director and our public works director have done a great job of working together in helping provide the information and the resources necessary for our Parks and Recs Commission and the Blue Ribbon Panel that was commissioned by the mayor to, to put these projects forth, these initiatives forth. I will let Lloyd Kiraton talk a little bit about the CIP process and working with Giffords Webster. I don't, the city did reevaluate the capital improvement plan in 2012 and 13, and we were redeveloping that with an eye towards the future and an eye towards modeling out financial responsibilities and capital improvement projects. And roads were a very big portion of that.
Well, my point is that we had a, a very different capital improvement planning process put in place, and that plan wasn't online, and now it is. It's very forward-thinking, and I think that was a very comprehensive planning process for not only staff, but also for, for council. So I just want to make sure people know that some sound approaches went into really figuring out what our needs are going forward.
And again, I'd like to also on that note, point out that all plans are available on Ferndale, mi.gov, if you go into the departments and look at Community and Economic Development.
You know, the reality is, a community needs to invest in its infrastructure. We have, there are communities that don't, and you see that. You can tell by driving on their roads that they don't. So this is a community that has historically invested in its infrastructure, and it is time to decide if we want to continue that investment. So I think it's an important thing for the community to do. I'm going to support this this evening. I'm excited that it includes some long-awaited and long-needed improvements to our parks. We've done some of the smaller things, but on this kind of a scale, you really do need to do it in your bonding. So I'm, I'm excited that it includes our parks. I think that's important for our community as well. But make no mistake, that the vast majority of the money from these bonds are going to go to our roads so that over the next 20 to 25 years, we maintain roads that are worthy of this community. And so nobody in Lansing, nobody in Washington is going to swoop down and give us money for our roads. If we want good roads, we're going to have to pay for them. And I think that's what essentially we're, we're talking about doing. The state has kicked the road funding can down the...
I was just going to say that.
...down the road a long time. The feds are doing the same thing. But this is a community, back in 94, I think was very foresightful in adopting this, these bonds, and I think renewing these bonds is important to the long-term health of our community. So I'm supportive.
I have a question for Joe.
Yeah.
And I apologize, Joe. Normally I try to get you questions beforehand so you're prepared, and, and this one just actually came up on me.
Go away.
In the, in the preliminary sample bond series model, you have us going out for 15 million, potentially, 15 million in 2016, 2018, 2021. What guarantee do we have that, that rate that we're talking about today, we're still going to be able to get in 2021? I get, I don't understand how that works. So what we're, we're trying to say to residents is that, you know, the rate is going to be 5.43323 if it's passed, you know, in, in May. But five years from now, how do we guarantee that that rate is always going to be there?
I'd like to address Robert Watzinski. He, in his firm, did the modeling for the city's bonding.
Thanks, thank you. We also worked with the city in 1994 on those projects. We're no strangers to the city.
Welcome back.
Thank you. There is no guarantee, is your simple answer.
Okay.
What, what you have to do when you present a ballot proposal to the electorate, in addition to adopting a resolution, is you have to make some assumptions. They're, they have to be reasonable. And to give you a brief synopsis of the, what we've used, we've used 5 and 1/4% for the 2016. We hope that's very high. I mean, you know, rates would have to jump considerably to get there. In the 2018, we've used 5 and 1/2% interest rate, and in 2021, we've used 5.75%. As Joe indicated, all the interest, or all the bond issues are 15 years from the date of issuance. So in 2016, they go 15 years. That is also required kind of by law because you can never issue debt for the, any longer than the useful life of the project. Your engineers aren't going to certify that your roads will last longer than 15, so you cannot bond for them. We've also been very, I think, very conservative. We've used the current, what they, what your assessor believes will be the 2015 increase in your taxable value of 1.80%, and we've used that from 2016 through and including 2036, which is the final year of the payment. So those are the assumptions. The ballot requires that you state the first year's tax levy and the average annual tax levy. So that's what the 5.4323 number represents. The city has the authority, when they vote a bond issue, to levy whatever millage, the rate, that they need to pay the bonds on because you're asking the voters to pledge the unlimited taxable faith and credit. If your value goes up, that rate goes down. If your value goes down, that rate goes up. It's inverse. And I...
That would explain why back in '09, '10, we saw that bond rate actually go up to like 8 point something.
Correct.
The, the current one we had.
Correct. And I, back in 1994, we were not required to state the first year's levy or the average annual in the ballot. And I'll be honest with you, I did not go back and review where we, where they would compare to. So if you're going to ask that question, I don't know the answer.
That's a long time ago.
I had black hair. So, I hope that answers that.
It does, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
But, but, but suffice it to say, you're being conservative with your estimates.
We hopefully are, Mayor.
It, it sounds like you are. So the one point, almost 1.1 is, is maybe even on the conservative side, that the rest, we could conceivably do better than that?
Well, the 6.5285 has changed from 1995, which is probably your first levy, to today. As one council member indicated, it was at 8% or over 8...
Yeah.
$8 per thousand at one point. So hopefully, we won't see those trends, but...
Right.
Yeah. But again, that was when the market dropped.
Yeah.
You know, so like he says, when, when values go down, that goes up.
And what happens is that when you sell your bonds in 16, 18, and 21, you, your interest rates are fixed. And I don't know your history on this council, but we were able to refinance some of those bonds that were issued in 95, 97, and I think 99. I can't recall the exact dates. Because they sold at a higher rate, and then we came back and we were able to refinance those or refund them, as it's called in the municipal market.
Yeah, I think that happened in nine, eight or nine.
Correct.
I think they were, yeah.
Somewhere in there.
Yeah, before the market, the bottom fell out.
Right, but, oh, eight.
Oh, eight, yeah.
So, you know, and you will always have that option to refinance your bonds, probably after 10 years if rates are lower. And we will keep an eye on it.
Other questions?
Just a comment that I think it's fantastic that our staff was able to realize the savings for our residents on their tax bill, and a reduction in the millage, or the tax rate. And we'll see a reduction in our tax bill for this particular bond. And I think that takes some real hard work to figure that out. So, thank you.
I would like to offer that I actually, being the data monkey that I am, to calculate the average mills over the 1994 to 2016, and it's about 6.38.
Holy moly.
I can, I can show my work for questions.
Yes, you do.
I appreciate that accuracy.
Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
I don't have, I'm trying to pull it up.
I move to adopt the attached resolution approving the street and park improvement bond proposal. Ballot, is that what I'm approving?
Uh huh.
Ballot language and directing the city clerk to submit it to be placed on the May 5th, 2015 election for consideration by the city's voters.
Support.
Ooh, close.
You guys have been like tying.
I know. Moved by Piana and supported by Polica. Any other questions, comments? If not, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Now moving on to item C, which is the consideration of approval of ballot language and resolution for the renewal of the voter-approved operating millage. Joe?
Up again. To start off this presentation, we're going to start with the 2.6 million dollar question. Why have property values begun to rise? Well, noticing the property values have finally begun to rise over the last year, why are we here today? And let me first offer why we are here today. We are here today to request a renewal of the voter-approved millage that was approved in 2011. It is set to expire in December 31st, 2015, and that will lead into my first question. Why are we here today? To provide an overview of why we're here today, I'd like to focus on two items unique to Michigan tax law. One would be the Hedley Amendment, which was passed in 1978, and that limits the revenue from property, property assessment increases that the city is able to recoup. The charter does provide for the city to, to secure up to 20 mills in operating millage. As property values increase, that operating millage needs to be rolled back. And today, it has been rolled back to a taxation... back. And today, it has been rolled back to a taxation level of 14.5. So as properties have risen, property values have risen, the city is actually not able to collect that increment, increase. Secondly, we will focus on Proposal A. Proposal A actually caps the city's ability to recoup the revenue growth that is generated by increases in property values. So I will illustrate that as we move forward. Proposal A caps the city at growing our revenues at 5% or the rate of inflation, whichever is lesser. This chart illustrates that between 2004 and today, the average inflation rate is 2%. So the norm would be the lesser. You'll notice that even if it's depressed, it's at about 4%. So we've yet to hit that 5% cap, as is. This chart was built to illustrate the impact of Proposal A, and I just want to walk you through this. It's a little dark, I do apologize for that. But the case scenario, this just an example case scenario, is for a home that was purchased in 2000 for $75,000, which is where we're starting right here. And you can see, over a series of years, your value is increasing. This is the assessed value. What the city can capture off of that is limited to the rate of inflation or 5%. So the city's increase in taxable value, which is what the city collects taxes on, is here. So you see there's a significant gap, as far as what the city can actually collect. Now, when there's an economic downturn like there was, you see the assessed value go down significantly. And with that, the taxable value goes down. Taxable value is not allowed to be higher than assessed value. So as the assessed value goes down, the taxable value goes down. Now, we are in, again, potentially, hopefully, a period of improvement. So here we show a line of the assessed values incrementally going up, and your taxable value goes down. And at this point, at 2020, you'll notice in the chart, your taxable value is actually less than the date you purchased it in 2000, because you are limited. And the city, or the homeowner, actually gets a significant tax benefit to the decline, as the amount they're actually paying is capped. So that is just an overview of generally how Proposal A works. And again, this is like the last presentation. If you do have any questions, please feel free to ask or interrupt during the presentation. So that leads into an illustration of where we are today. And again, we're going to go back to 2007. These numbers were pulled from the city's financial statements, which are also available on FerndaleMI.gov. You'll notice in 2007, assessed values and taxable values are at a significantly higher place. As you scroll your way down to 2014, you can see, illustrated in this bar graph, what I'm talking about, the city's taxable value has decreased significantly, along with the assessed value. And now, as the assessed values increase, moving forward, the city is capped at 5% or the rate of inflation, which is typically about 2%. So that's pretty much what we can expect, is to be capped at 2% growth for taxable value. This chart gives you an illustration of the actual impact on the city's revenues that are based on property taxes. So here, this is all green. This is prior to any Hedley override from 2011. This is just when the city's property taxes were a little bit more stable. Then you begin to see the decline. And council, in their wisdom, in 2011, understood this, and understood that property values would decline and taxable values would decline, which is represented right here. This blue increment is actually represented by the voter-approved millage. And you'll notice that with the voter's approval, we've actually been able to keep revenues more or less sustained where they should be. And now we're a bit more stabilized here, moving into 2014 through 16. You'll notice, if you were to remove the Hedley millage, the city's tax revenues would be deflated below 2007 levels significantly. Here's another example of the story that we wanted to show the voters and council. And that is, here's an example of how we have looked with voter, with the voter-approved millage, as far as revenues and expenditures. So you can see there's a significant gap here with revenues and expenses, once the approved millage took place, and we were able to capture that revenue. Revenues did decline a bit here, and expenses did decline, but you're still actually in a little bit of a deficit situation right here, but it's manageable at this point, and revenues are still tracking up. You'll notice here, without the voter millage, what the scenario would look like today. And you would notice your expenses still tracking, but your revenues haven't really tracked with your expenses. And actually, the buffer between the two are significantly increased, moving into 2015. So now, with an eye looking towards the future, we look at what it would look like without the voter-approved support moving forward. And this chart takes it through 2015 through 2019. Here we have the city's fund balance, which you'll notice is currently about 5.59 million. In red, you see the city's revenues. And this is overall revenues. This includes other sources beyond just property taxes. This is the city's total revenue picture. I believe, I can't see it. I think that's what I intended. Here, the green represents the city's expenses, also an overall picture. And you'll notice, moving forward into the future, you're a bit stable here, as the Hedley won't quite expire. But then, once it does expire, you'll notice that expenses remain more or less the same. Revenues are still on the decline or less stable. So you're starting to have to subsidize your revenues with your fund balance. And your fund balance, or cash reserves, begin to deplete. As you walk into 2019, you could expect the city to have depleted the fund balance completely. I would like to point out that this model does not include any strategic initiatives that the city would incur. Should we be faced with a revenue shortfall, the city would be forced to make some challenging decisions. And certainly, we wouldn't just opt for going towards the fund balance and depleting it right away. The point would be to mitigate that. I wanted to illustrate, again, using the $75,000 taxable value house, what this looks like generally on a tax payment basis. So the mill amount is 5.4552. And what would likely look like as a tax payment would be represented as $409.14. Again, if this were to be approved, and let me learn from my previous mistake, during the May 5, 2015 election, the change would be no different. So what you've been paying, now you would still continue to pay. There would be no increase. So what does the general fund pay for? I want to kind of walk you through what these last couple of years have looked like, since the voters did approve this in 2011. And I also want to clarify what they're proving for. So voters are proving to pay for general fund operating services. And here we have that represented. The guys who cleared up your snow last week, the Department of Public Works Services, you have your recreational programming, city communication tools, like the city's new website. You have more public works, improvements in parks, improvements in maintenance programs. You have the Ferndale Fire and Ferndale Police. And I want to be clear, before we move on, what it does not pay for. It doesn't pay for the auto parking. It does not pay for water and sewer. Those are special revenue funds. It does not pay for the major and local street. We've already covered that today. And nor does it pay for your sanitation, your recycling and recovery. That is a separate mill directly for sanitation and specifically for sanitation. So what have we been up to? I wanted to kind of use this time to compare what the residents approved in 2011 is kinetic energy. And kinetic energy is energy in motion. It's what we've captured with the reinvestment the residents have shown in their government. And so we've taken this, and we've captured this kinetic energy, and used it to restructure, and take pause, and think strategically about how we want to be an organization that's adaptable and flexible moving into the future. We're going to start with the Department of Public Works. Over the last few previous years, they have been able to achieve $600,000 in annual savings. They've done a great job in reinvesting and restructuring within themselves. You'll notice, I'd like to highlight a few things. Training, as you can see right here, the DPW has reinvested in itself and recommitted the training, its own inner resources. And we now in-source the majority, if not all, of our tree work in-house, as opposed to contracting it out. And this has saved an estimated $168,000 a year in tree maintenance work. You can see your strategic hiring. Lloyd is a big, big proponent of hiring for skills and hiring for needs. You don't hire for the position. So here, he's been able to hire skills in-house, such as masonry work, concrete and pavement work, and electrical work. And all of this means that we are now providing our own internal workforce, a lot of these services through our internal workforce, rather than through contracting out. It is estimated that these have saved up to an aggregate $350,000 in contract costs, just by making these strategic moves. And technology, that's going to be a big theme as we move forward into the 2020s and 2030s. How are we going to leverage technology to become more efficient? And we've done that here by investing in sign shop software upgrades, which have helped us reduce costs of actual sign production that we place throughout all the cities. And the sewer televising equipment that was reinvested in by council last year, we no longer have to contract out that very expensive piece of equipment and very expensive service provision. We now provide that in-house, and we can now begin to be more strategic and thoughtful about how we manage sewer and water infrastructure maintenance moving forward, as we control our own destiny. City viewed as business-friendly, this is going to be touching on our Community and Economic Development Department. We'll start with the base. And in the base, again, you're going to see the theme of restructuring the department. They invested in building management software, so we're using technology. We're leveraging mobile technology now to get more of our staff into the field and out of the office, which creates efficiencies and gets them where they need to be to improve our customer service. That begets to the mayor's business council in 2012, which was a council that established, council and the mayor, had wanted to establish the city as a business-friendly environment. And we started this group of Ferndale business owners to create B2B networks and opportunities, and help them educate us on some policy areas that we needed to address. An example of that would be our elimination of construction bonding. That was seen as an obstacle to a lot of businesses requiring that. So we've since then eliminated that. And that hastens the permit process, and then it removes an impediment to doing business with the city. We've ran some reports and some analysis, and statistically, we're crushing it. Work permits are up 40%. Construction value of our construction is up 93%, while staff, department expenses have actually maintained a minimum, and well under the 40% and 93% threshold here. So what that says is, Ferndale's been a great place to invest the last couple of years. We're doing a lot more business, and we're doing it with minimal investment in expanding our expenditures. And we're doing that through restructuring, using technology, and being more thoughtful about how we're doing our business. Becoming a leader in municipal IT, this one is home to my heart. We've worked really hard to begin to lead the city into a unified vision of information technology investments. We started by reconstructing the city's network. Doing so, we've been able to get all buildings together, connected on the same network, talking to each other, before all the buildings were siloed, and a lot of the network resources could not speak to each other. What that enabled was our mobile user environments. We now have virtual private networks that are secure. So we do have our field staff out there in the field, doing work, communicating, using our network resources back at City Hall without having to be in City Hall. That has impacted services tremendously, I believe, in all departments. Next, we've learned to save more through scale. So one daunting task that was presented to us last year, like several other organizations and most governments, we didn't plan for the phase-out of Windows XP. And Windows XP was no longer supported. So the city was operating on well over 70 workstations. And how do we phase all that out at the same time? So instead of taking it as a challenge, we met it, and we decided to, we decided to use it as an opportunity to revitalize our purchasing procedures. And now we've been able to capture significant savings through purchasing through scale. And now we've also incorporated replacement plans that we now have. So I know exactly what department and what desk will be getting replaced in what year over the next five to six years. And establishing online services. This is something we've only just begun to attack, and I'd like to really become a leader in this for local government as well. We'd like to, we launched the online services portion on FerndaleMI.gov, so residents can now pay property taxes and online water bill or utility payments. We're looking to improve that, and I hope to continually improve that and demonstrate that improvement to the public over the next year. We've launched the city's social media, so we've really tried to launch our communications tool, and really become more diverse in how we communicate to our residents, whether that be through the website, through city media, or even through traditional print media, which we still believe in. The city now has subscription services where you can get text alerts from the city whenever there's emergency notifications. So we're really looking at all the different kinds of channels, and seeing what works best for our citizens, and where our gaps were, and how we can fill them. Human Resources has been a boon for us over the last three years. It's been some really great investments here and changes that have occurred. Starting with this, we have been able to reduce over $165,000 in labor attorney fees and legal fees associated with human resources. What we've done with those is turned that savings and pivoted it into our first human resources director position, that's just dedicated solely to human resources and improving our work culture. Since the establishment of VHR, we've seen a significant qualitative instances of positive relationships with collective bargaining units, which is also, as long as you have a healthy negotiating environment, a collective bargaining environment, then you're going to see your legal fees decrease. That health begets that. We've established wellness programs that have realized immediate health savings. The Weight Watchers program has been very successful and widely touted, even nationally, by the Weight Watchers organization themselves and through local media. And just recently, last month, the city launched the MyLife Wellness Center, which is a wonderful collaborative endeavor between the city of Royloke and the city of Madison Heights and the city of Ferndale. So again, we're showing how we're being more thoughtful about doing things differently, moving through these tight times. Ferndale Police Department clearly does more with less. I'd like to point out here, through 2009, what the city's crime rate was. And that's not an indictment on 2009, but it's more of an illustration on where we are today. You'll notice, if you could ignore 2015, that was a little data runoff I forgot to correct. This slide is intended to stop at 2014, and to show the difference. And if you look at overall crime, Part 1 crime, and again, if there's questions about Part 1 crimes and how that's determined, I'll leave that to the chief. But overall crime has been reduced by 50% between 2009 and 2014, which is just astounding. Ferndale Fire also doing more with less. We have been successful in our renewal of contracts with Pleasant Ridge and Royloke Township. So we are continuing to be a leader in service provision from Ferndale Fire. You'll notice that they too are taking advantage of technology and our network reinvestments. And now our fire marshal has the ability to have a mobile office, so they can do more work in the field. They're doing investigations and entering data, submitting data to the county online from their fire truck, using our secure network that we've created. They've also taken steps and strides in the personnel category by reducing their staff minimums to help us manage personnel-related costs. So they are doing more with doing less. And they're a great example of the dedication and commitment of our staff, who are doing more without guarantees of new revenues, and being asked to minimize expenses. And just recently, across the street, the 43rd District Court did improve the face of Ferndale's justice system, without dipping, I had to say that, I'm sorry. Without dipping into the general fund dollars. This did proceed 2011, but it does show that thinking about how to spend a citizen's dollars wisely and conserve them where we can was just as prudent back then, when they decided to save for this. The judge and other department had decided to save for this building. And the day finally came where the building came to fruition, and we have a nice renovated 43rd District Court and newly renovated Ferndale Police Department, all paid through savings and patience, and not through the general fund dollars over the last three years. And to touch on the city's financial health- And to touch on the city's financial health, we've alluded to it earlier today, but our financial health is clearly indicative by our credit rating increase from last March. We were upgraded by standard and force from an A+ to an AA-. It seems like a negative to me, but that is a positive in financial nomenclature. What this means is that the city can secure or have a better potential to store lower bond interest rates. It means we're a more attractive business environment. And that we do have a stable fund balance and cash reserves and that, all that goes into much of their equation to establish the credit rating. As far as the department, we've added more terminals. We heard that the lines were a little bit too long in city hall, so we've started to address that by adding more terminals, more conduits, so we can spread out those lines and move through people quicker. Also to reduce the lines, we're trying to, again, provide more online payments and other resources for payments. We want to help the residents avoid having to come to city hall if they don't want to come to city hall to do business. And staffing efficiencies through cross-training, the finance department has become a symbol of pride in being nimble, being able to cross-train most of the, most of the department resources. And recreation, the expenses have gone down 141,000 and revenues have only gone up 10 to 20. So they have really done a great job of maintaining the integrity of recreation program, which we know is important to our residents, while taking significant cuts in expenses and still getting a general uptick in revenues as low as it might be compared to the expenses. But the relationship there is worth acknowledging and it's been a great job by Joe Mancheck who's led us the last three or four years. So what does this mean? To sum up, this means that staff does remain dedicated through cost savings measures. We understood how important that those revenue renewals were in 2011. We understood what that meant for the voters. So we, we paused and we decided to build our own kinetic energy. And we decided to restructure and we decided to use it as an opportunity to improve. What does the loss of $2.6 million annually mean? That would mean approximately a 15% loss for the city. And that's a significant loss. So just like it would be from personal budgets, we would have to consider how we would continue doing business moving forward with 15% less revenues. That could look like reduced service levels, whether it be through more personnel cuts. We could eliminate capital, eliminate, delay or eliminate capital improvement or replacement projects as well as technology investments. So that would more or less slow the kinetic energy. Are there any questions?
All right. Questions of Joe?
Not questions, observation-ish more. Slide number four, I think is a really great graph. It's the Proposal A hypothetical case sample where you start in 2000 with a home purchased at 75,000 with the taxable value and the assessed value lines going up. I think that's great for someone who's purchased between '95, '96 and someone who's purchased up until about 2011, '12. But there's another group of people who bought in the eighties and early nineties before Prop A who continue to see their taxes go up even after we raised that. And that's because they purchased so low that even when the recession came into play in 2011 and the property values dropped, it didn't drop below their taxable value. So they kept seeing their, their taxes go up. And it would be great if somewhere in the slide you could add that scenario as well as someone who's purchased in the next two, last two years, because that's a different group of people who are going to see a significant increase in their taxes as well, because the taxable value for them won't settle for another year to two years.
And we'll be happy to work with our finance director to put together toward any information that would help you.
Joe, I don't remember, I thought I saw in some of the earlier information that we got, the number, what the revenue was in 2011 versus 2012.
True.
Okay, there it is. So, because you had a, you had a figure of 300 and some thousand dollars less in revenue.
Let me look through my notes.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is, if I remember correctly, what you had said was the city is currently taking in less revenue today than we did in 2011 when we passed the Headley.
Ah, yes.
By 300 and some thousand dollars. I thought it was somewhere in a previous.
Yeah, that's, that is in my introduction on the call for action. I thought I had included it in this, but I did not. But yes, so to your point, in the introduction of the call for action, which is available online prior to this presentation, is an example that shows that between 2010 and 2015, 2015 revenues are actually less than the 2010 revenues that we were taking in.
I think that's a really important point to make. When folks want to know, well, why, you know, four years ago, you said you wanted this because you were, what you wanted to, you know, the world was going to improve in four years, hopefully revenues were going to rebound. We're actually taking in 300 and some.
317,000 dollars less than we were in 2010.
100,000 dollars less in revenue today than we did when we passed the Headley in 2011. I think that's just important for residents to understand that our expenses have gone up, even though we continue to look for savings all over the place. And you did a very detailed and thorough job of talking about all of the ways in which we are seeking savings. But on the revenue side, it's, it's flat if not declining. And so without an additional renewal of the Headley, we're back to where we were in 2011 talking about the kinds of scenarios that we were talking about in 2011 of service cuts that are significant, because our revenue is in exactly the same place and in fact even a little worse than it was then. I just want to be clear about that, that. Because I think there's going to be some residents who say, well, you had four years to find enough savings to make that work. But this is a significant part of our budget. And I don't know what assumptions were made in 2011, but to your point, property values are increasing and that's the great news. I think most people have probably seen their assessed values begin to finally rise, but that has not translated into increased revenues for the city, as your graph very accurately and clearly points out. And so, so even though housing values are rising and the economy is better, in terms of the revenue that the city makes, we're no better positioned than we were in 2011 and the need for a Headley renewal is exactly the same, I guess. Is, would you, that seems like a fair statement to me. Would you disagree with that?
Mayor, that is a fair statement and, and I do apologize that I neglected, I left that out. But it is in the call for action, so I would encourage people to look at that call for action. And that was taken from the city's financial statements. But yes, in 2015, we're taking in 317,000 in less total revenue than we were in 2010. And that does include the Headley. So that is a very clear statement about where our revenue position is right now.
And not only is our revenue less than it was in 2011, but our expenditures are less, significantly less than they were in 2011, which I think also helps illustrate the point. So I am going to ask you to create a slide for me, not tonight obviously, because those two numbers I think are critically important. Not only is our revenue less, but our expenditures are considerably less, which means we're spending much less of your money than we did in 2011. Even still, that, that, the, the Headley mills are critical to offering the services that we do today.
Yes, very.
That's the bottom line.
That's a very important point.
Anyway, any other comments or questions of Joe?
No.
I have, I have a couple. I just want to say personally, I know there's still homeowners out there, while property values are rising, there's still people who are underwater in their mortgage, like my household, who bought in 2004. And so we're not even back to where we were. But I do know that the investments in our community are helping make those property values rise, which is why we're talking about improving our parks and improving our streets. And so that is all about the process of making sure homes like mine don't remain underwater in their mortgage. And I was part of, my first time I took my seat in council was in 2010. And 2011 was really about the Headley. And we really took some guidance from a community-led financial committee who said, hey, let's revisit where we are in five years. And we are at that point. And as you said, Mayor, we are doing slightly worse than where we were five years ago in terms of revenue. And every community of older urban suburban interim communities are all dealing with the same problem we are in terms of the Proposal A Headley, which is really part of the broken municipal finance system, which I won't go into here, but it really is a contributor to cities not being able to grow at a pace that we should be able to. And so I think the restructuring process has been invaluable and we certainly have had a changeover in staffing leadership, which I think has been very responsible for helping find these savings. And so again, we always go back to what the state is trying to do, attract talent and retain talent. And I feel like we have sort of infused that into our philosophy here so that we can achieve those savings with the talent that we're hiring. And so I just wanted to say, for me, this is a long-term, what, 10, 15 years? Isn't that what all the projections say about where cities are going to be back to where the decline, when the decline happened? So, which goes back to my question, which is something that we're asked to vote on tonight, which is previously the Headley was for five years and we're asking for 10. And, and the reason I wanted to sort of bring that up for, for my point of view, why 10 is important, is to give us room to actually realize that growth over time. But more importantly, the city plans to go to a three-year budgeting process. You have led the way on that from two-year and now we're positioning ourselves to go to a three-year following Oakland County, which has really resulted in being stable over a three, three-year period. And if we go to another five-year Headley renewal, that will only give us three years under one three-year budget cycle. And then we would have to go to voters again mid-three years. So a 10-year will allow us to have at least three full cycles of the three-year budget cycle period. And I think that's important, which is why I'm supportive of the 10-year Headley renewal and then come back to the voters in 10 years and say, hey, where are we? What have we done in the past 10 years to make sure that we're still transforming, restructuring where we need to and focusing on continuous improvement? So I guess I don't have a question. I'm coming out as supportive of the 10-year as part of the, it's been a long day, people. I've answered my own question in my head. Thank you for participating.
How about a motion? You brought up a couple of important points that I want to just touch on. You mentioned that a lot of communities are facing the same issue with Proposal A and Headley. But I would say even within our own community, other entities like our library and our public schools are facing the exact same financial issues as a result of this. So this is unfortunately a widespread issue that cuts across our community and needs to be addressed in some way. And having said that, I think it's important, I agree, I support the 10-year because I think it's, it would give false hope that in five years, suddenly this, the broken financial municipal structure in Michigan will be fixed. We're not in the situation we're in because we've misspent. And Joe, I think you did a really nice job of clarifying that and I got a feeling we're going to be talking about that a lot until May 5th. All of the things that we've done to save money, to cut money, to streamline services, we're not in this situation because of mismanagement or misspending. It's because of a broken municipal finance system that I don't have a lot of confidence will be fixed in five years. So I think 10 years gives us the opportunity to look a little further out, to do a three-year budgeting process that allows us to look further out and give us some more stability in our funding. And so I think that's an important point that you made.
Well, as someone who was on the Financial Planning Committee back in 2010 with the 11 other wonderful citizens, you are correct. We didn't, the same crystal ball that didn't exist to identify the collapse wasn't there for us to determine how well we were going to do in five years. We selected that committee recommended five years because we felt that was enough time for council to determine what it could do during that time. Did it need additional time? It also allowed voters the opportunity to get accustomed to this new rate. We were hoping maybe after five years, we could come back with a lower rate. Unfortunately, the economy did not come back as strong as anyone had hoped. It, it's important to keep this, this rate and that's why I'll be supporting it for another 10 years.
I agree with that.
Maybe the last point I would make is, because the campaign officially starts tonight, I guess, is I want the residents to know that, that in order to maintain the same level of quality services that we have come to expect, a vote yes in May for these two proposals will both preserve the services that you currently get and reduce your taxes by at least one mil. So I think we've done the best that we can to put forward a financial package to the residents that protects the community, protects our services, and lowers taxes 10 times greater than the tax break that Brooks Patterson announced last week, by the way. So we're, we're doing real things in this community to lower the cost of doing business here within the constructs of, of the environment that we're in. And so I hope residents support this in May. I support it this evening. And with that, Marnie, would you call them? Oh, we need a, we need a motion.
I move to adopt the attached resolution approving Headley override millage ballot questioning language and directing the city clerk to submit it to be placed on the May 5th, 2015 election for consideration by the city's voters.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Polika. Last comments, questions?
No.
All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
London?
Yes.
And Mayor Holder.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to call the council. I see, let's see, the police chief. Anything else for the good of the community this evening, chief? No one's in fire today, huh?
He didn't show where he's been.
I know, he's, he's, he's in Brian or somebody.
One short notice, your honor, is that we have a retirement party that will be in the honor of the five retirees that recently left us. Detective Sergeant Patrick Jones, Detective Ken Dunleavy, Lieutenant Gary Whiting, Sergeant Steve Jennings, and Officer Stephen Carroll will all be at the Carlos Banquet and Convention Center on February 27th at 7:00 PM. If you would like to attend, it's a $25 per person charge and you can obtain those tickets at the police desk. We would like to invite the public, particularly new to these officers, for a testimonial dinner in their honor. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Derek, anything else from community economic development this evening?
That's right, John.
All right. Joe, anything for the Recreation Department this evening?
No.
Jenny, anything for the HR Department this evening? That's a yes, everybody.
Well, as we talked about a little bit earlier, is it related to our promotions in the police department? We just wanted to make sure that you were aware that we are still moving on with our recruitment for a police officer. We are currently conducting some additional interviews. We're looking to fill six of the vacancies that we currently have, five due to retirements and one due to resignation. So we are currently in process to find the most qualified candidates to join our police force.
Excellent. Kara, anything from the, I don't even share your title these days, community and communications and community engagement?
Director of community engagement.
Director of community engagement. Anything for the community engagements perspective? All right. I, I do see representatives of both our school board and our library board. I know you guys just like hanging out with us, but did, anything you want to share just in terms of good of the community from the schools and the library? It's nice to have you here. Yeah, come on up, yes. Monique was a trustee on the Ferndale district area library.
Close.
Yeah, I screwed that up, didn't I?
Yeah, I just wanted to say personally that I'll be supporting Headley. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Lloyd, anything from DPW? You got through a major storm, so I'm going to call on you for a second. You got through a major storm and I know there were, yeah. It's never easy and I know, but that was about as big of a storm as we've had in a long time, in a short amount of time, and your, your folks did a wonderful job, all things considered, so thank you. Marnie, anything from the city clerk's office?
No, nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight, all right. Joe, anything else from the city manager's office?
I would just like to remind residents that city offices will be closed next Monday and observe President's Day.
All right. All right, Dan, anything from the legal perspective?
Just one item. Council will recall the signed applicant who is seeking an appeal relative to his, his signed denial. He has filed a suit against the city. That's been referred. That's been referred to the MMRMA, and I will keep counsel advised as a status of that.
Thank you. Mayor for Tim Martin?
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right, Councilman.
I want to piggyback on what you said about Lloyd and his staff, Madam of DPW and Joe. Joe, you put in a lot of hours, I know, and thanks for keeping us updated. Some of your texts woke me up in the middle of the night, but that's okay. Good job by all.
Good. Councilman Polika?
Again, to reiterate the great work of the DPW on snow removal, there were a few impatient people on social media, but eventually they were happy. The other thing is, please support Headley renewal and the bond in May. I'm very excited about the park improvements, and the only way that we really can do that is with the passage of that bond. And earlier tonight, we had a wonderful meeting about the update on 360, and there's a number of business owners who are not happy about the project, thinking that it's too much growth for the downtown. But Marketing and Sales 101 says, "Supply is influenced by demand, and right now, demand for space in our downtown is at its highest it's ever been. Although some space may not currently be open for business, many vacant spaces are currently undergoing renovations and will soon be open. For example, the former AJ's Cafe was leased for the past year undergoing renovations before it opened two weeks ago. My point being, we have very little supply in our downtown. Cross that with the high demand, and business owners who are currently leasing are going to find their rents going up. This is one of the very many reasons why businesses should encourage expansion development in the downtown. If residents and business owners want to continue to get the service the city offers like leaf pickup, employing the finest police officers in the state, or having the best snow removal in the region, the alternative is that the city would need to raise taxes to provide those services at those levels." That's all I have to say.
Very good. Councilwoman Piana?
Yes, I wanted to draw attention to a letter that all of the city council got from business owner Chris Johnson of the Emery, the Webb, and the Living Touch, encouraging the city to establish a property assessed clean energy program, which is really about helping buildings become more energy efficient. And I'm asking the city to accelerate the goal that we had to create a PACE improvement program from city council goals in 2013 or '12. And I would ask that the city staff get a resolution of intent to publish the PACE report outlining its program for the city to hold a public hearing and then pass the final resolution adopting the program. So what this just basically says is that the city is going to establish a PACE district for the entire city, and that this would allow any building owner who would qualify for the property assessed clean energy program, which basically says your energy upgrades need to be able to be paid off over time at cost. So this would allow them to enter this program. Unfortunately, counties are passing this for the countywide, and that any building located in the county would be eligible for PACE. Unfortunately, Oakland County is not doing that on behalf of the county, so therefore cities in Oakland County are doing that on an individual basis. So cities already in Oakland County that have been passed the PACE program are Rochester Hills, Royal Oak, and Southfield, and I really think it's time that Ferndale get on board and provide this for our cities. And we have business owners who are wanting to be a part of it. So it is part of a Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission program to put forward, and I encourage council to support this program, and we get the resolution of intent and hold a public hearing as soon as possible.
I would like to see that.
I couldn't agree more.
So.
And my understanding is there is no financial impact to our city?
No.
Costs us nothing.
Costs us nothing. So unfortunately, I'm very sad that the county isn't doing this on behalf of all the cities who are now having to spend all the energy doing it themselves, and the county could do this on our behalf. But in light of that, we should take bull by the horn and create one. Okay.
All right, very good. As for myself, I just want to reiterate what I said after the special meeting earlier. We really do want to hear from the public in terms of your reactions and comments and questions about the 360 project. So go to the website, ferndammoves.com, or go to the ferndalmi.gov website, where there'll also be a place for you to give us your feedback and comments. We're sincere about wanting those, and we'll be transparent about what we do with that information when we get it. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.